Gary, would you please lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge we introduce this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nita, roll call.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Schlebach?
Here.
Counselor Segala?
Here.
Counselor Ellapart?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Court is declared.
Approval of consent agenda. It's original reading, approval of council approval.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Nita?
Counselor Ellapart?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion and oath of Officer Michael Martinez.
Chief, is there any chance we could put this towards the end? We just got a hot call over down on the... Yeah, can we push this back? I just lost the vote. Or at least one of them. Did he... We'll pause. Go ahead, you need to. Sorry. This is found shimmering. Robbery.
Okay. So you want to do all that later?
Yes, sir.
We'll go to citizen comments. There's a layer on there.
They're numbered. They were on.
We have discussions. Okay, I'm sorry. It's down in the contracts. It's a basis. Okay.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Citizen comments. Barbara Winkler?
That's me. Okay, do I need to stand there or is this fine?
No, it's still advised, no.
Okay. All right. The one and only one. I'm Barbara Winkler. I'm with the investment banking firm of Hutchinson, Shockey, Early and Company in Denver. And we contacted Forrest at the end of last year to discuss the current bond financing that you had from 2008 in anticipation of the rates and the market, as we all know, has been first and foremost in everybody's mind. And so we were looking and wanted to see if we could save the town some money on their financing. And that we were able to, even though this bond was not prepayable yet, we technically needed to wait until September, we had Forrest permission to contact the bondholder and we were able to get them to waive the prepayment timeframe. Instead of September, they allowed us to go ahead and see if we could get things to be refinanced and save the town some money. So we were able to get them to agree. We were able to bring the rate from a 4.60 down to a 3.19, which is pretty substantial. One of the things we as investment bankers and lenders look at is what type of savings are we going to get you? Because if it's not going to be substantial, it really doesn't make sense to go through all of the work. And our rule of thumb is about 3%. If we're able to save the cities and counties 3%, that is substantial enough that it makes sense. We were able to actually save 5.34% over the remaining 10 and 1/2 years that are left on the bonds. That equates to about almost $14,000 a year. So over the remaining term of the bonds, it's about $151,752.62, to be exact. And, you know, right now, we're very fortunate. We were able to have this rate be held until we're able to close, which is, if everything goes as planned, will be in March. But we don't have to worry about, even though rates have been continually going up, we were able to get them to hold it so that we could go through all of the processes. And so it's a very, very good deal. I think the town is definitely going to see these cost savings as a plus and there's no other, you know, last minute things that are going to pop up that is going to take away from that savings. Any questions?
Actually, I have a question probably for the staff. Do we require a vote to approve this to get it going or do we just have consent?
Well, essentially, Counselor, if you approve this ordinance on first reading, then it'll get going and then you'll have... We did allude to the fact that we would have to have a second reading of that in order to get it done, in order to close the deal. And I think that, one thing Barbara didn't mention though, is after March 15, the rate goes away. And then that's restart and we will not see that kind of rate again for a while.
We worked with QTAC Rock as the bond counsel, who was able to talk with Forrest to find out what the guidelines were with the town, to make sure that we were following the proper regulations and things.
Okay. Well, I've been through all of this, as much as I could with my housing mortgage experience, but I don't see any downside to it at all. The only, my concern is just getting it done and processed as quickly as possible. So whatever we have to do, if it takes a motion to do that, to get it started, then I would certainly submit that.
So what we've asked Counsel to do is approve this tonight on first reading and you could do that this time. Later on, the agenda will ask you to set a special meeting. Because the timing of the second reading after the first publication, we've got to meet the timeframe. Do you remember that exactly?
Right now, we're looking at today's 22nd.
Right.
So that's the ordinance reading. And then we would need to, February 28th, do the newspaper publishing. And then we are looking to close March 13.
Right, so 10 days after 28th January, which would be roughly the 11th of March, we would need to have the council convene a special meeting. Sole purpose on the agenda would just be to read the ordinance on second reading.
And sign documents too, probably.
Yeah.
I would move to approve ordinance 884 for refinancing the city's outstanding series 2008 bond at a lower interest rate.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Nita?
Counselor Ellapart?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries on first reading.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pleasant surprise.
It is. It's exciting. I have my saving everybody's money.
Citizen comments?
Yes, you have one. Okay, sorry. Anything else? Sorry.
I'm Margot Alexander and I'm part of Neighborhood Watch. And I'd just like to bring the council update, a little update. We had our second meeting on Monday night and it was a horrible night and we had over about 20 people there. It was a great turnout and I just want to sort of give you a little synopsis of what we're doing. John Rosecrans has been there every time and he gives us a synopsis of what has been going on in town and what are the accomplishments, what has helped. And he introduced Michael Martinez, the investigator corporal, Montavista Police Department, who gave a great presentation with handouts on safety and security at home, what ordinary citizens can do to help the police catch criminals, catch them in the act. The main thing is, don't be afraid to say something. If you see something weird, and it doesn't just have to be in your neighborhood, anywhere in town, you see something strange, maybe give the cops a call and, you know, let them check it out. It may be something important. If not, it's okay. And then he also gave us a little rundown on an event that happened at Big R, which was quite interesting, and gave us an idea that if you have cameras, you have lights, if you're a business, good lighting, cameras, you can catch crooks in the act, which was very heartwarming to see that happen. Then we had Jim Clare, who is our representative out in the rural area. He introduced Taylor Dean, the Rio Grande Sheriff Officer, and he spoke about what's going on in the county. And it's just really great. He says with county people in the rural areas, if they see things, they keep doors locked, they have the right locks, they have lights, they're watching each other's property neighbors, that kind of thing, crime is going down, the theft part. And the citizens report things happening, the police, the officers are out patrolling, and it all works to deter crime. And he also said that 911 is used for emergencies and he gave us the number 657-4000 to be used for non-emergency, which I thought was nice to know. Then Jim Clare mentioned that livestock rustling is going on. So if you see somebody at midnight loading up a trailer with animals, maybe you should call the police. And I thought that was rather interesting because I always thought that was something back in the cowboy days. So we're being educated, the people who are there are getting an education in what is going on in the valley and what we need to be aware of to help deter crime. And it has just been a real blessing to have the PD right there and talking to us. And one of the main concerns, if you have a security system, which is something I never thought about, you should have your lights on because cameras work better with lights. And I thought, you know, I never thought of that. So we're just being educated on little things that may make a difference in how we conduct ourselves, how we watch our neighbors, how we pay attention to... Maybe there's a car parked in the street for a couple of days. Maybe that's not right. And be aware of not just a green car, but it's a green car with a dent front bumper. You know, be aware of specifics to help the police identify things when they're out looking. Same way with people. Is he tattooed or has a beard? It's something specific so they can actually look rather than just a black hoodie, people running around. There's more than one. And the other thing that I wanted to say was that we had just, we always tried to have somebody there to give us a talk on something to help us. So our next meeting is going to be March 19th and Carol Regenbog is going to speak on Century Warriors, the elderly, our community, and their part in Neighborhood Watch. And we're also going to have a presentation on SLVE-911 and how that is important in the valley and how can we be a part of being given information, a report, if there's a crime going on, if there's a fire going on, whatever device you use at home, you'll be notified and how we can go about registering for that. So we're going to have a person talk on that. And besides that, Elizabeth Shank baked the cake. We had a raffle and somebody won the cake and we raised a little money. So it's a great organization if anybody wants to come, just to learn about how you can protect yourself and be a part of the community outreach to stop crime. It's a great organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Margot.
We like to see community involved, right?
Yes, definitely.
I want to just add that the new leadership in Neighborhood Watch, as expressed by Margot, Elizabeth, there's some others involved, and it's taken off in a whole, I won't say different direction, but stronger and more direct direction. And I thank you very much for taking over, especially unexpected on this last meeting. And we did get you into the building at least. So, and it sounded like a good turnout and a great meeting. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have any other public comments? Chief, are you ready now?
Yes, sir. Come on up, fellas. So, couple things tonight. One is a promotion of two corporals. We typically only had two corporals, but I was given the authority to promote a third with kind of a special, different direction in mind. Michael's going to be our investigator. I don't know if Monty's ever had one, a true detective or not, but we have one now and these guys are getting promoted. You see them take off on the first chance to get involved with them. That's partially why they're getting promoted. I assume you got the guy?
Yep.
Want to tell them what happened?
Got a tussle in the glove.
So, what?
We had...
Three days ago?
Three days ago, we had a guy that actually, he went into a residence and he put a gun to a lady's head and attempted to rob her. She didn't have anything of value, so he left and we've been looking for him ever since.
And part of what we're really trying to work with is the corroboration between the different departments. So these guys get the word out, was it Tisby?
That was part of JSO Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office sees him at Family Dollar?
Most of the time.
My details are a little... What's hearing up? They hear it on the radio, off they go, he's in custody, he's in the back. Pretty major crime. Now we just trying to work through these kind of things, get these guys off the street. This guy will probably be in jail for a little bit. With that, want to introduce some panel?
I've got my brother-in-law over here, he's an officer in Alamosa. Got my father right next to him, my sister, my stepmom, and my niece and nephew.
Welcome. You're already here, already have his badge on. Didn't have anybody to pin it on necessarily tonight. Michael, you want to introduce your panel?
Yep, there's my dad, my mom, my nephew, and my girlfriend Emily, she's going to pin my badge on.
Come on, Emily. This is your chance.
Get your coat through the stall.
Careful. All right. Kind of come around here. With every promotion, kind of reassignment, every raise, this would be a kind of redundant from their first time, but as corporals. So I'm going to start the oath here. Aye, state your name.
I am Heath Hart.
Sorry. Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Under the penalty of perjury?
Under the penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.
And of the State of Colorado?
And the State of Colorado.
And the Charter and ordinances?
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Montavista?
Of the City of Montavista.
And the County of Rio Grande?
And the County of Rio Grande.
And that I will faithfully perform?
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of corporal?
The duties of corporal.
For the City of Montavista?
For the City of Montavista.
And the County of Rio Grande?
And the County of Rio Grande.
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed.
And upon which I am about to enter.
And upon which I am about to enter.
Michael, sign the top one. You guys can keep that one, we'll send the bottom one for us. I know you're all banged up, so you want to try to get pictures or is that more effort?
You know what I said about those guys? I'm good.
That one, sign this one for me. Congratulations. Respect these things. Anything you want to say?
Absolutely.
You want pictures of them before you go?
No, I see. Any of the family want to get pictures though, we should probably do that. This is the... The paunery of the night. This is Lena. Lena's retiring. Lena's at point service here. She started off with another handler. Michael decided that he was willing to take on the responsibility and kind of the duty of taking on the training, the care, and has had some pretty substantial cases. I don't know, you want to give us any kind of...
Sure, one of my first cases was a crazy story. The girl gave me a crazy story. She said she was coming from Publot. I stopped her on 285, coming from center. First deployment with her and she found it right away and it was just amazing and that was a good one. She pled on that one. Ever since then, just your typical good case. Been good.
You don't really appreciate the ability of their nose until you see it work and it's pretty amazing. And they're not always, they're always right. They may not always quite get the right spot or the right, where the scent's coming from, but you can always trust their nose, that's for sure. You can see she loves her dad. She will be retiring with Michael and his family at their home, so she'll be in good hands. But we really appreciate what she's done and what you've done. Michael is going to kind of oversee the K-9 program, so that'll be part of his duty. He's got that knowledge and as you know, we're working on the next generation. So we have a couple plaques, one for Lena.
Okay, so for Ms. Lena, we have the Service Award in recognition of distinguished career of service with the Montavista Police Department, K-9 Lena. And then Michael, the Service Award in recognition of the distinguished work as a certified K-9 handler for the Montavista Police, Michael Martinez. I would also like to add, if it's okay, because Lena's original handler was Dylan Sutton. He has loved us, but he got sent a certificate as well with his name on it for bringing us this beautiful animal and letting Michael be chosen. So, Mr. Michael Martinez, welcome.
Do you guys want to get pictures at all or you want to sit in the hall?
Yeah, I'll just do mine in the hall.
Chief?
Sir?
One thing about Lena that a lot of people don't know, when she was sitting in the room with the door shut, she didn't like my voice, but if she was out in the hall, I was okay.
She's a good judge of character. Thank you.
Fix later.
This is a renewal liquor license for Southwest Liquor. They are in compliance and I have checked with the police department and there are no findings of violations and they have submitted all paperwork in compliance with the renewal. So I just ask that you approve their renewal tonight.
I would want to approve the Southwest renewal license.
Second.
Can I just...
Go ahead.
Sorry. I just wanted to clarify the motion. I apologize. Should have brought this up earlier. The liquor license is specifically for 2900 Sherman Avenue, Montavista, Colorado 81144. Just, are you wanting to amend the motion to make sure that that license is...
That address is actually 2011 Grand Avenue.
Oh, yeah, I got the wrong one, the home address.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. And I just wanted to make sure that we specified that it's at that location only.
Okay, been moved in seconded for the amendment. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Ellapart?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 884.
It was actually the...
Oh, that was the...
Refinance.
Refinance, all right.
I don't know why it's in there twice.
Just make sure you got it, Counsel.
Thank you.
Discussion on interviews for extending RFP for 45 days. Or just go to land donation first? If you'd like to, Mr. Mayor. Land donation. Karen?
Any questions on that? I prepared a memo. It's just essentially seeking authorization to spend $100 to get a title report so that we just, it's out of an abundance of caution, but it's always a good practice to do that to make sure we've got no title issues before we accept the donation and accept any title issues that might come with it that we don't know about in advance.
I could, Mr. Mayor, give you a little quick background on that. So that land donation was offered to the previous city council and the city council decided they want to accept it. The idea, if you look at the map, it's this little tag-endy triangular parcel that's very small. But there were some folks at the meeting that evening that thought it could be used as part of the community garden project. So, you know, council had directed staff to work on it. And, you know, you have a couple options here. I mean, it's a donation. If the council desired to accept the parcel, you could direct staff to get the title report. We certainly could do that. The parcel itself doesn't have water currently. There might be ability to use some of the city's ditch right from it. That takes some mechanics, if you will. Or the city could actually extend a water line into the parcel with probably a lockable spigot because there wouldn't be any interior place for the water to be. So it's really up to council if you want to do that. If you do, you know, Rob and I, we talked about the spigot idea. The only current use of the parcel, which is incidental not by the owner, is often the ditch company puts a lot of their fines, if you will, from the ditch and burns them there. But I'm sure that they can find another spot to do that. So just at the council's pleasure, if you could either accept the donation and have staff, you know, go ahead and get the title report or not, it's pretty straightforward. I will say the garden club folks were pretty excited about having the opportunity to get it, so.
I don't know where that's at. Where is it? I see the address, but I'm not finding it.
Wyoming and graduated in 1970, came down here because somebody down here wanted somebody to go in with them. It looked like a great town. It was, I was really impressed by its layout. And so I started in with a person down here, Mr. Corlett, started practicing. I'm a member of the Wyoming and Colorado bars. I was, I think I first got a job as a school board attorney. And then after school board, Swatch County Attorney. And then as city attorney of Montevista, I picked that up somewhere around 72 or 73. Montevista was going through some pretty rough times at that time. There's a lot of tension in the air. This was the end of the Vietnam War and there was protests on, it went on almost everywhere. Here, things got pretty dicey. Merchants sitting in their room, in their shops at night with loaded weapons. I heard shots ringing across the street at times. To make the long story short, we started, and the police force was only about four or five people at that time. And so we were totally undermanned. We got together a program called Rent a Cop Program, together with the governor's office, the Colorado State Patrol. And the police force went from that four or five people to almost the strength that it is right now, about 14 different officers. And these people came down from all over Aurora, Pueblo, Colorado Springs, Denver, to be officers down here for a period of time before a new force became effective. As a result of the success of that, I was being tapped on the shoulder to run for district attorney. And this was around 1976. So I decided to take up that challenge, ran for DA, was elected in the throughway race, became district attorney in January of 1977. And I only intended to do that for one term. I ended up doing two terms. They wanted me to stay on, so I did. And then when I finished that, it was time to come back to practice. And I was able to talk to the city council. I think when Mott was mayor at that time and I was, I resumed my position as city attorney. So that, that was continuous from 1970, or 1985 then until the end of 2016. We had a lot of things go on during that time. We had, I founded the Urban Renewal Authority, for one thing. Made the city a court of record, first court of record in the San Luis Valley, predated We, we did codification, recodification of our statutes. We instituted a complete code of offenses, a nuisance code. And we were involved in downtown renewal, urban renewal. And I guess in the middle of that, the usual things that you do, prosecution was a large part of what we were having to do. Trying to think of what else there might have been at that time. So anyhow, I started also picking up some other municipalities during that time. About 19, somewhere around 1988 or 89, I believe, I became city prosecutor for the city of Alamosa, was really kind of based on my experience as district attorney. And so that is a job that I've had for almost 30 years over there now, being there prosecuting attorney. I picked up the town of Del Norte around 1993 as town attorney. Picked up town of Blanca around 1999, still town attorney there also. The town of South Fork, somewhere around 2002 to 2004 in there, and I'm still their attorney. Picked up the town of Swatch, I believe around, I don't know, I think it's been about 15 years ago. Picked up the town of Crestone also. I was even town attorney for center for a couple of years. So I've had quite a bit of experience with the municipalities. It's, it's a lot of fun getting around all over the valley. People sometimes ask me, who do you represent? When you're going from Crestone to South Fork, it's kind of Buddhist Baptist representation. So I really enjoy the representation there. That's kind of been a nutshell of my experience and all the things that we have become involved with, with everything from drafting ordinances to doing codes to coordinating with public agencies. We've, I've learned a lot and gotten a lot of networking with Colorado Municipal League, our SIRSIA attorneys, and different departments all over the county. And so I feel that I've gotten a pretty good smattering of, you know, legal matters all over the San Luis Valley. Does that kind of answer your question?
That definitely answers the question. My only concern is with all that going on, do you have time to be an attorney still?
Yes, I do, to answer that question. I've specifically avoided taking any matters, for example, on Thursdays, because I know that these city council meetings are on Thursdays. So I have those reserved. And it's also, I may end up giving up one of the jobs that I have. I'm looking closely at the situation in Alamosa because I think they're ready to go kind of full-time on their prosecution with their city attorney over there. So that may be something that, especially if you elect to have me be your attorney, I'd probably consider changing over.
Appreciate it.
That does occupy a fair amount of time.
Sorry, I'm writing. That's not really easy, Gene. What is your greatest attribute, attribute that you feel makes you ideal, the ideal candidate for city attorney? What is one weakness that you have and how would you overcome it if selected as a city attorney?
I think my greatest attribute right now is my desire to see this town succeed. You know, we're a little bit different than our neighbors on the east and the west. On the east, we have a city that has a university and has a commercial center. On the west, we have a town that has a hospital and a courthouse. No matter what the economy does, those institutions are probably going to be there to help support the town. In Montevista, we have a great little town, it's laid out well. I think it's the best laid out town in the whole San Luis Valley, but we've got each other. And we've got to figure this out. And we've got to get our heads together. And we've got to move together as a body, as a unit. We can't just stand still. We've got to fill up those buildings. We've got to make progress. We've got a lot of things on our table. And I think maybe my greatest attribute right now is just my enthusiasm to help the council reach its goals that the voters gave them to reach. What was the other part of that, my greatest weakness?
Yeah. What is one weakness that you have and how would you overcome it if selected as a city attorney?
Wow. I've probably got a lot of weaknesses to deal. I don't know. You know, I think maybe sometimes I just am a little bit too hard charging and maybe I come on a little bit too strong at times and maybe I'm a little bit too focused and I need to stand back a little time, some of the time, and listen to people more of what they're trying to say. And I try to do that. And so there's always this thing of trying to move forward and trying to listen to what people really want at the same time. And you have to do that in my job within a legal context, too. I might add that I try to do all this with keeping in balance some physical activity, too. And then sometimes that's a real challenge, that I'm trying to find time for everything and I run short at different points, but I'm still out there skiing, climbing mountains and doing all those things, so just to let it.
So would you mind describing your philosophy for providing quality legal services?
My philosophy, Joe, is to do everything that I need to do to provide you the best service possible. At times, it may mean going to extra meetings. It may mean a lot of research and depth. I have naturally accumulated a lot of material, especially from Colorado Municipal League over a period of 25, 30 years, to draw on. I've also got some excellent connections up there that I can call. I've got good connections with SIRSIA and I draw on those folks. I am not adverse at all to, when it comes to expertise in an area, to give that expertise to somebody who's more proficient than I am in it. An example is your water right now. I work and have worked for years with Peter Nichols and he's your water attorney. And we've got a great working relationship. And he's very adept in water law, for example. And I think the nature of the law now is that you can't be great at everything. Going back to the percentage of my practice, it's municipal law is probably 75 or 80%, I would say. The rest of it, the rest of what I do is some estate planning, probate, that type of thing. But that's sort of a side thing. For the most part, I'm doing municipalities. I don't know whether I've fully answered your question or not.
I think that answered it. Thanks.
Good. Gene, do you see yourself as a litigator or a transactional attorney? And would you be comfortable in prosecuting cases in municipal court? And are you comfortable writing city codes and ordinances and contracts, et cetera?
You're speaking to the choir. That's what I do.
It seems like that's everything that you've done, right? And providing legal advice to counsel? I think that's an important one for us to consider.
That's what I do.
Yeah.
That's what I do. You know, I've been prosecuting in municipal court for all these years and it's actually a lot of fun to do that. It's not something I try to avoid. I enjoy the interplay with witnesses and that type of thing. And so, yes, I'm doing that. Transactions, certainly. All your, your contracts, that type of thing. Especially trying to get folks focused on the city. I didn't even stop as soon as these folks were elected. You know, we've had one meeting before they ever took office with, with one person who is instrumental in economic development and so forth. And I've got ideas already. I don't know whether everybody is going to buy theirs or not, but anyhow, I'll play it out to you if you take me of different people that we need to talk to at different stages about grants and loans and things like that for economic development. I know that Joe's active in EDC over there and those folks, too. And we've just got a lot of resources to draw on. So, yes, everything that you have mentioned is stuff that I do. Advice, I like an open door policy. You can probably visualize that in training and so forth. And I, I try to offer training to the council as soon as I've got a new council in all the aspects that you're going to be dealing, your open records act, open meetings law, your code of conduct, your passage of ordinances, all these types of things that you get into liability, et cetera. So I try my best to, to educate my council. And so far, again, knock on the wood, I don't, I can't remember any of my city councilors or town board members who've ever been held personally liable since I've been representing.
Please tell us about your billing practices and rates. Also, will you be able, will you be available on an as-needed basis for telephone conferences with city personnel and elected officials? If so, what are your billing practices for telephone conferences and questions? Do you have a minimum unit of time that you bill?
The way that I have worked, Victor, all my, all my municipalities is just on a base retainer system. And that covers everything. The only thing that, that I've not usually covered on that is if I go outside the municipal system and I'm in county court with a case, like on a Rule 106 matter, a statutory review, or I am in district court, I've usually billed that out separately. That is negotiable. But I am, I try to do everything on a retainer basis. So calls to me, I like the situation where, you know, if you want to come into my office and Joe wants to come in and see me about something and the door is open, you're not going to get billed for that. You know, and if Kathy has a question that she wants to call me about, I'm on the line there and available and she's not going to get billed for that. So I try to bring everything within a retainer that is going to cover things. This takes a lot of time to be able to forecast how you're going to come out on that. But I like that system because, first of all, I don't have to spend time composing biddings on an hourly basis. So, and that's, that's really kind of wasted time when you have to do that. And secondly, you know, we're able to, we're able to project our own income like that. And the city's able to project its income, its expense like that at the same time. So I've, I've found that that's the best system. If you want to know where it was, and you probably do, I think at the end of 2016, I believe it was $37.50 a month was where we were at that time. So, but, you know, this, I don't have any hard lock-ins on demands or anything like that. I realize we have to work within budgets and that type of thing, so. But that's, that's generally my billing philosophy. It includes, and I actually go to many more meetings than the charter prescribes. The charter just says I go to city council meetings. But I end up going to URA meetings, planning commission meetings, board of adjustment, even the arts committee, these ad hoc committee meetings, I find myself there. And I also find myself going to special city council meetings all the time, too. So it's, you know, it's, it's a total commitment.
Just another thing, too, just being involved with a lot of the other municipalities in the valley. I was just looking at this question again. It says, would you be available as an, on, as an as-needed basis for telephone conferences with city personnel and elected officials?
Sure. Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, you get, you get certain things going such as, let's say, investigations. And you're on the phone with SIRSIA attorneys on that and they usually want the city attorney as part of that conversation. It may be on a grant thing of some type you're trying to wrap up. So all these types of things are, are things that we're involved with. Sure. In fact, I, it bothers me when I'm not asked to be part of those conversations because I don't know what the problem is there.
If you don't mind me just making a quick comment on that, it has been my experience working with Gene Frech and Fast, that he does have an open door policy. I have been able to call his office and set up a meeting, go in and sit down and have a conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
With the council's permission, we might want to skip the next one. Gene already answered it. So would you be willing to operate on a retainer basis in lieu of billing? And he just went into some detail. So I would pass on that or read the next one, whichever you choose.
Agree with your passion.
So you want to take the next one? Okay.
Then we'll jump to number eight. If you require additional or ongoing training to perform the duties of city attorney, do you feel this cost would be the responsibility of the city? If you require additional education, how certain are you that you can educate yourself to handle all the components listed in a timely manner?
I, I do a combination of things, Gary. First of all, I'm usually reading publications that come out. I'm ordering publications from the ABA or one of those on municipal law. I'm reading publications from CML that they put out all the time. And CML puts out a smorgasbord of different publications. And these are the types of things that I use to train the city council with also. And so as far as that goes, I, and, and I tried to go to at least two conferences every year. I tried to go consistently to the summer conference, which this year is going to be in Vail. And there's a attorneys conference that's part of that, that's what I go to. And in the fall, we have a training session that traditionally now has been at Colorado Springs, which is attorneys only, and I go to that. And I find that those conferences are very beneficial, not only because of what the subjects are being presented, but also the networking that goes on so that you know who you can call. I've got a telecommunications issue. For example, I'm on the phone with Ken Feldman up there. If I've got a question that might pose an issue on marijuana or something like that, I might be on the phone with Jerry Dahl or David Broadwell or one of those folks. So, yeah, I try to keep educating myself. This is a process that never ends because municipal law keeps developing all the time.
Gary, do you mind if I ask a follow-on question on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and it may cover this later on, I don't know, but one of the things that I was curious about is where do you stand on municipalities paying for that training?
Well, you know, one of the, I guess one of the benefits of representing several municipalities is that you can kind of rotate that around so it's not a big burden on anybody. And that's what I've tried to do in the past. I pay for my meals usually and that kind of thing myself. When I go to those things, this year, for example, I think South Fork is paying for part of the registration and so forth at CML and then Del Norte may be paying the room or vice versa, something like that, you know. But I try not to stick any particular municipality with whole bill. I do like a little help going to those things because it's for the benefit of the municipalities. But at the same time, if you're representing a number of municipalities, it's easier to share that cost. It's kind of the same thing that, that Peter Nichols does when he comes down here. He represents a number of municipalities, but when he comes down to, to do work down here, he tries to spread that out as far as accommodations and mileage and so forth goes, all the way across the board who he's representing, so it's not that big a burden on anybody.
Give it a little answer there, Gary?
Fine. Thank you, Gene.
How do you feel about working with other attorneys that are under contract with the city? We are currently working with water attorney on augmentation plan and we often work with SIRSIA attorneys on issues related to personnel and work through this common.
And if I haven't already answered that, I think I have, but I do that all the time, so I'm used to that entire system. I don't have any ego hangups about that. I think when you're, when you're doing this type of work, the object is to do the best, produce the best product possible, whether you're doing that with somebody else or whether you just do it yourself. So I have no compunction about working with other attorneys and I do that on a regular basis. And I like doing that, in fact, because there are a lot of attorneys out there who have special expertise in different areas of the law. And you sort of get to know who's expert in what after a long period of time.
If you are selected by the city of Montevista to represent it, please state whom you consider your client to be and also your role as the attorney. And I have a secondary question after that.
Okay. I represent the city as a city. The power comes from the people to the city council. So I represent the city of Montevista through you, the elected representatives, the city council. So you are my superiors, you are my bosses, as it were, as a unit, not individually. So that, so that doesn't mean that, you know, I don't listen to you individually. I do, but when you act, you act as a unit. So that's who I represent. I represent the city through you. And part of the corollary of that is I work with other, with your departments. I don't work for them, I work with them. So I work with the chief of police, I work with the public works director, I work with the city manager, with the finance department.
Would you mind going a little bit more, and I appreciate that first and foremost, would you mind going a little bit more into what exactly is your role?
Well, I think my role is, you know, it depends on which department you're talking about, Joe. If it's, for example, the chief and I have had some sit-down sessions already about different things, but in regard to prosecution, let's say. So I'm talking to officers when I'm working with those officers. And usually what I do is come in and do some training with the officers, too, about things in testifying, if it's pro se by themselves, defendants by themselves. I do training on that. I do training on the elements of the offense, that venue, all these things that they have to establish in court. And there may be personnel things that the chief is concerned about with the direction that his department's going to go. The city clerk probably has questions at certain times about how to structure things and what her duties may or may not be. So she may be on the phone calling me about something. The city manager may be on the phone. More than likely, the city manager's going to be sitting down in my office, talking to me quite a bit about things. So I'm used to that. So it just depends on what the subject is. It might be economics, it might be economic development, it might be a contract with somebody coming in to the city. It might be a question of zoning. It might be a question of something involved with zoning, setbacks, et cetera, like those types of things that I'm in conference with. So the departments, it's different. So it's just, it's sort of a constant communication type of thing. And a lot of times, you don't know everything off the top of your head. You've got to do some research a lot of times and go into things and provide written memorandum about it, that type of thing.
Well, I definitely appreciate that insight. That's a little bit of insight into the individual department working. What exactly is your role as far as interacting with city council? And how do you feel about taking your direction on tasks from city council?
Well, I think you're the masters of the policy that the city is going to take. So you give me directions on what your policy's going to be. Now, there may be times when I feel pretty strongly about a direction that you're going to take, and I'm going to tell you that. And if you're going into something that's going to get you into problems, I'm probably going to tell you about that, too. You know, ultimately, you have to make the decision yourself about where you're going with an issue. But, you know, I interact with the city councilors and the mayor on a constant basis. And I think most good city attorneys do that, too, that, you know, you want to know, should you do this, should you do that? Is it going to cause a legal issue? What are the possible ramifications of that? Now, in doing that, I like as much advanced information as possible. I don't like to get sandbagged with a question at city council meeting. Sometimes that comes up and sometimes that happens. And we've seen that here. But to the extent that I can be prepped on that so that I'm ready to go with a ready answer, I like that type of approach better.
Well, I definitely recognize that, too. I mean, I think we as council don't like getting sandbagged by a question either. So I definitely appreciate that sentiment. I will say that it hasn't, you've definitely been honest as far as your personal opinion versus your legal opinion. Appreciate that. I will say that my past experience has been that, like on the tiny house ordinance, it was quite challenging to try and get that ordinance drafted. It seemed like there was a lack of responsiveness there. And that was kind of discouraging, I guess, to me to try and get that ordinance passed because that was something that we as council had said was a priority and it didn't seem to materialize. And we actually had to wait until the oncoming attorney ended up actually finalizing all of that and getting it in place. And so that was a bit of a concern for me.
Okay. I'm trying to remember back on that and, you know, I remember we were discussing tiny houses. And tiny houses are something that has been developing quite a bit in the zoning area especially, where you put those things and how you're going to deal with it, whether you're going to deal with them as mobile homes, whether you're going to deal with them as, because there are all varieties of those things, too. It's a developing industry right now. So I guess, you know, I don't know what to say to that except that certainly if, I'll try to provide you the most expeditious answers that I can in the future. And if you see something that needs immediate attention, for God's sakes, you know, let me know about it right then because I don't mind being bugged about that.
Thank you.
Gene, the city claims to enter into an annual contract for provision of the services required of the city attorney with the opportunity of five years of renewals. And is such a contract acceptable to you with the knowledge that the council may choose to conduct an annual review of your performance?
Yes.
Yes? A simple tweet.
Do you feel it is necessary to attend council meetings or would you prefer to prepare reports for council's review on any pending legal issues?
It's necessary to attend council meetings because that's mandated by the charter. Even if it wasn't mandated by the charter, I would be here. And if I need to prepare something in advance for you, I would be willing to do that.
Do you feel it is necessary for the city attorney to attend planning and zoning commission meetings, board adjustment meetings, and urban renewal authority meetings on a regular basis? And explain your thoughts on this.
You know, I don't know whether it's necessary to attend every one of these. I think I have attended most of them because I've felt it necessary to keep up with where departments are and what they're doing. What you're doing, for example, on your program of urban renewal development, the current program, and you've got some grants for that, the demolition of existing buildings, I've been trying to kind of keep an eye on that type of thing. So I have a tendency to over-attend things rather than under-attend things. There are so many committees out there and they're peripheral things that it's good to know about, too. I've been going to the Coffee with a Cock, the things to see what the, how the public is reacting to the need for law enforcement and this kind of thing. So I attend things like that, that there's no mandate to attend those. But out of being able to do my job, I really need to know what's going on. You know, sometimes Rob may have an issue on the public works or something like that. And sometimes that comes around with the urban renewal stuff and the demolition and water lines, et cetera. So, yes, I am willing to attend these meetings. I do attend these meetings. I made it a habit to attend these meetings. Sometimes it's not absolutely necessary and I will sometimes check with the clerk or the city manager to determine whether attendance at this is going to make any difference, especially if I do have a conflict on any of those nights. And I do have other nights that I do things on with other municipalities and regular meetings and so forth. But to the extent that that can be adjusted and I can attend those meetings, my answer is yes, I do.
Thank you, Gene.
Additional water rights and augmentation for the city is high priority. What do you know about the water issues facing Montevista and the valley?
Well, we have, you know, the valley, we just gone, they just wrapped up a trial over there about the rules and regulations. And the water situation in the valley, finally, all the wells are having to come into compliance. And it's been an integrated system, the rules and regulations are in now. The trial is pretty well over, it looks like. And what we did is try to get ahead of the curb by buying water rights. You know, we've bought additional Henderson Water, we bought, let's see, rights of Mr. Taze, I'm trying to remember everything that we've been into, McDonald Water, et cetera. And so I think that Montevista is kind of taken this by the horns and gotten on top of all that. We'll be going through the AUG plan and the filing on that with Peter and Kate in the near future. So I expect that to be successful. It sounds like they've been successful in negotiating an approach with other towns and cities about how to trade these rights back and forth and the replenishment of the underground hackafur, the unconfined and the confined hackafurs. So our, you know, we've been purchasing water rights now for the last, gosh, what, seven or eight years, something like that. And I think that we've got that pretty well wrapped up with the Henderson Water and I'm trying to remember what else, far as to...
Henderson, Sun Peaks, McDonald?
Sun Peaks, yeah. McDonald, Ditch and so forth.
So what is your, kind of asked us a little bit, but maybe just go in a little bit more detail, what is your current workload and how do you set priorities among your various clients?
Well, my current workload is, you know, it's five days a week. I like to get out on the weekends and get out in the mountains and do my thing out there. And I find that I'm able to space it out. I find that I'm able to take care of the clients that I have. I don't want to really add any more. I have backup now that I didn't used to have, too. I have an attorney in my office who can take over and back me up if I've got to be somewhere else. So once in a while, you might see Mark come in, Mark Loy, he's, he used to be a deputy district attorney, he's got an office right in my office now. So that's an additional feature that we have now that we didn't used to have. And, let's see, the other part of your question, workload. So I'm able to come to city council meetings on a regular basis. I will be able to make quite a number of your urban renewal and planning commission meetings. You mentioned planning commission. I would have to look at what nights they are and if they've got a little flexibility and I've got some conflict there, I would talk to the chairman of the planning commission to see if there's any other time that they can meet those. And so I think I've got it pretty well worked out for the regular stuff. I don't feel uncomfortable about retaking Montevista as a client.
Thank you.
I think we're about there, Gene. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I, you know, I would consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to work for you folks. You've all been through a lot in the last year. And I want to see the city become a success. I want to be part and help the city council move toward that end. I would like to see a situation while I'm still ticking where we've got most of our stores filled up downtown, we've got new buildings out there, we've got renovation done at Sky High, our police department is getting pretty much there already. And, you know, our public works department appears to be doing well. So that's, those are the two things that every city has got to have that's going to function. People have to be able to flush their toilets and they have to be able to step outside without being afraid. So I think the two most important things that you've got going are well underway.
Does the council mind if I ask a few more questions?
No.
Just got a couple things that I kind of put together. The one question we did answer in the interview, so that I'm just going to leave that one alone. But how have you in the past and how would you in the future, and this is a two-part question, how have you in the past and how would you in the future handle high-level employee resignations and terminations? Obviously, there's two different pieces in there.
High level meaning volume or high level meaning department heads?
Yeah, you know, high-level employees themselves, like the employees that are at a high level.
Department heads.
Department heads or, you know, other employees that may be close to that level.
Well, I think you've got to determine from the council's standpoint where that is going to go. And we've got provisions in the charter that govern some of that, you know. The provisions in the charter, for example, on the, some of the officers, whether it's the city attorney, city judge and so forth, serve at the pleasure of the council, the city manager can be terminated at the end of any 30-day period, that type of thing. But you also have to look and see, is there a contract out there at the same time that has tried to bury that? So you've got to be able to deal with that issue also. And I think there are sometimes good ways and not so good ways to deal with, if somebody want to terminate, I think it's good to have conferences with them and to explain to employees deficiencies that you see and improvements that need to be made rather than just sending them letters saying goodbye, you know. But I think that, you know, I would be there to, and a lot of times, it can be a very touchy situation, too. And sometimes you may have to have investigations done about employees. And sometimes you may need your resources outside of the city, like your SIRS resources to complete these investigations. So I think all those types of things have to come into play when you've got some situations that people have, you know, if people are doing things like whistleblowing and stuff like that, you've got to take a look at that.
Would you mind just going a little bit more into detail on the resignation side of things?
Sometimes, you know, I think sometimes when you're talking to employees, employees will probably decide that they want to resign rather than, and sometimes if you paint a picture of what you want out of an employee, the employee may decide that he or she wants to resign rather than go through the type of regimen that you want that employee to go through. I'm not sure whether I'm getting to the core of your question or not, but...
That's, it touches on it. One specific resignation that I've been, that I wanted to touch on a little bit was the previous chief's, Chief Grayson's resignation. And do you feel that you handled that well? Was that taken care of? Just kind of wanted to get your take on that one.
Well, I remember that he resigned and you accepted his resignation. I don't know that, I don't know that I was that involved with his resignation. I think that was a matter between the council and himself.
Well, if memory serves me, we gave you the letter of resignation that he drafted up because he did resign verbally to the city manager. And then the city manager said, well, I'll need that in writing. So he proceeded to provide it in writing the next day. We then proceeded to give that to you. And when we, and it was, then there was a succession plan that was put in place as well. And there was about a six, right around a six-month period that we had planned to go through the succession plan. And then at the end of that time, we had planned to, the chief resigns. However, we were unable to, at that point in time, to find the letter of resignation. In fact, if memory serves me correctly, you went down to the paper to see if the paper had the letter of resignation.
You're really kind of catching me off guard there, because I don't recall that, frankly, Mr. Schleber. I don't recall that happening.
Well, yeah.
But if you say it did, I guess it did. But I don't recall that incident at all. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I just, it was a big concern for me because that really blew up for us. It was a pretty big mess for council. And the fact that we didn't have documentation really put us in a really bad spot. So that was pretty concerning for me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just don't have any... Yeah. I'm sorry. I just don't have any recollection of that situation. All I remember was that he did resign and I don't remember talking to you about that either, frankly. I'm sorry.
And another question that I had was what types of, and obviously, you've drafted a lot of ordinances in the past, so just name a few, if you won't mind. What type, excuse me, types of ordinances have you drafted in the past and how have they been implemented?
Well, I've drafted ordinances on practically everything. I mean, you know, you're drafting ordinances on the offense code one time, you're doing the nuisance code another time, you're doing something in personnel or administration another time. It might be something regarding the liquor code. I've been instrumental in doing the whole recodification, you know, of the city. So that's, that's taken all your collective ordinances and putting them into a codified form. So it's practically hundreds of ordinances. And it covers the whole gamut of what you're doing in the city. You know, it covers your day-to-day operations. It covers your administration. It covers your utilities, for example. It may cover something dealing with the franchise. And, you know, in that regard, I think I pointed out too to you that there are a number of things in your charter that really need attention. You've got things in your charter that say that if you assign a franchise, it's got to go to a vote of the people. I don't think it's absolutely clear in your charter about the structure of your, it's sort of a council-manager form of government, but it's a little bit of a hybrid, especially when you get to things like the, who the clerk reports to, whether she reports to the city manager, whether she doesn't. You passed an ordinance at the end of 2016, I believe, changing that because you had some issues with the clerk and so forth. Not this clerk, but another clerk. And so we're always trying to bridge that gap, you know, with passing ordinances. And you've got a number of things in that charter. That thing dates to 1922. And I've urged the council and yourself, you know, to really consider a charter revision committee to work on this. So it's, I don't know how to tell you how many different types of ordinances, getting back to your original question, that I've done, but numerous, numerous ordinances.
Right. And I'm well aware of it. I do believe it was 2015, end of 2015, that we passed the clerk ordinance, if I remember correctly on that.
Yeah, it might be, it might have been at the end of 20, I think it was around the end of the year when we did that, in 2015.
One of the ordinances that I was thinking of specifically was the drug house, the nuisance house ordinance that you had written. I don't know if you recall that one or not, but one of our police officers, who's no longer with us, was very enthusiastic about trying to do some civil asset forfeiture. You know, we, one of the things that I'm sure Chief can attest to this, that we continuously see is one specific house being used by multiple people. We take one person out, somebody else just moves right back in. And so one of the things that we had tried to address was drafting that ordinance. And I remembered that you had actually brought that to our attention along with the police officer. Were you aware that that ordinance, which we did pass, fortunately was not codified? It never made it to the books due to records. Records were a bit spotty over a certain period of time. But with that being said, that ordinance actually violated state and federal law. I don't know if you were aware of that or not.
I'd have to look at that. I'm not particularly aware of that.
Well, the specific issue that was with it, and it was brought to our attention and we changed it in 2017. But the specific issue with that was the fact that municipalities can't do civil asset forfeiture. It has to go into district court. And that is a, that is both written under CRS as well as federal statute.
Well, there are some of these things that, you know, I guess you're catching me a little bit off-guard right here with that particular question because I'm trying to remember back to that particular ordinance. I know that you always have this argument about home rule and how far home-rule cities extend. And a lot of times, things will be in-state statutes that pertain really to statutory municipalities, whereas a home-rule city has powers going beyond that. So unless the state has evidenced an intent to preempt the municipality and made it a matter of statewide concern, the municipality, the home-rule municipality can actually go beyond the statute. So now, the question of federal law is another question, too, you know, whether it contravenes federal law. I mean, we've got things that the state of Colorado has done that really are in Congress to federal law, too. For example, there are one of questions.
Right.
So, but, you know, I don't know how else to answer that question right now without researching that a little bit.
Okay. And that's fair. That's fair enough. But my, my concern is, is as a municipality, we're not exactly equipped to handle a major case should somebody decide to challenge us. I mean, I think the state of Colorado in, basically going against federal law, has said, yeah, we're willing to take the lawsuits and whatever, we'll deal with that. I think us as the city of Montavista, that's a bit disconcerting, one. And two, the fact that the council wasn't made aware of it was a little disconcerting as well.
Yeah. I don't recall any discussion about that, so I'm, I would have to go back and look at what you're talking about.
Sure.
I do recall discussion on things like, you know, the initiative and the referendum and this type of thing where we've got differences of opinion about how that should be done and that type of thing.
Right. So my last question, well, actually, I guess I have one more. How would you respond to constitutional violations within the courtroom? And more specifically, how would you work with council to resolve the issue?
Well, constitutional violations in the courtroom, I think what you're talking about is probably things that have occurred or possibly occurred that an organization like ACLU came in on. And, you know, you have to respect people's constitutional rights, first of all. The municipal judge should be aware of constitutional rights. He should provide, and we've got a new bill out now. Of course, it's going to become effective until I have the first about appointment of council. And we've had statutory matters regarding, you know, the time in which defendants, the city has to notify, or the city has to be notified if somebody's picked up on one, things like that that are already in place. So it's not only constitutional rights, but statutory rights even. So I think you've got to be aware of all those and you've got to be aware of the procedures that you have to put in place to make sure that all those rights are safeguarded. And at the same time, you want to take, do that consistent with taking bad people off the streets. So this is something that is a dual type of function. The prosecution needs to be respectful of those rights and so forth. And our system is such that defense counsel and the judge play a big role in that, too. Because a lot of times, the prosecutor is not present for those types of things. Usually, your prosecutor comes in only when there's a defense counsel on the other side.
Well, I appreciate that answer. And I guess my big concern there is I think we can debate the bias or unbiased of the ACLU. I think that's a very debatable topic. What I do believe is very, very important is that council is made aware that the ACLU is looking into something. Because while there may be something there, there may not be something. They're a powerful organization and we as the city don't have resources to, quite frankly, take on the ACLU. And so it was a bit disconcerting to find out via a newspaper article that we're being investigated by the ACLU. And so that is a very, very, that's probably my biggest concern out of everything that has happened, that there was not a single member of council that was made aware of the fact that we were being looked into. And I did ask around a little bit and find out, and that responsibility notified council would be with the city prosecutor. And as such, your roles combined. And so I'm just kind of curious how you would bring that up.
Well, in all due respect, you know, in this particular situation that you're talking about, and I read the report, there was only one window in that whole report referring to the city of Montavista on one page. Most of this was focused on the city of Alamosa, frankly. Now, you had the same judge as the judge of both. But it was, I felt that it could have been better handled here, frankly, than it was handled because I felt that that judge really at least deserved a conference with the city council rather than just being, you know, put on suspension. And that was, that was my feeling about it. That's not to say that I don't know what, you know, a lot of this goes on with, simply between the judge and the defendants that come in. Prosecutor doesn't see this because the prosecutor isn't there for all that stuff. He's not there for the prosees. He's only there when the defendant has legal counsel.
Okay. So I'm a little bit puzzled by this response because number one, first and foremost, it doesn't matter how small the amount of wording was for the city, we were still in the spotlight, number one. We're being targeted by the ACLU. Number two, were you not aware of the investigation?
No, I was, I was not aware that ACLU was looking at anything in the city of Montavista, frankly. I was not.
So you spent, what, three years with the current judge? And during that time, the ACLU, or not the current, but the previous judge, the ACLU was investigating during that time. We had the current city attorney on the job for three months and we got a memo, which, okay, wasn't the ACLU memo, but it was a memo talking about some issues within the courtroom. But you're saying you were completely unaware of any issues within the courtroom?
I don't, I don't recall dealing with ACLU on any of those issues. The only issues I recall dealing with members of ACLU on were, I think you had some issues on pandering and this type of thing in the past. And I believe we had communication with ACLU on that issue. And the issue of door-to-door solicitation, I think they came in on a question there. And that's been several years ago. But I was, I was very surprised to see this particular report myself. And, yeah, there wasn't much in the way of Montavista on that. I remember the one window on one page.
Well, and so then the other piece about the handling of the judge. Just so you're aware, we gave him every opportunity to show up and he didn't show up. And second, we followed every rule and procedure to the letter. We placed him on paid suspension pending an investigation, which is what we were required to do per city charter or ordinances. And the fact that he chose to then resign was his own decision. That had nothing to do with what we did. The fact of the matter is, is all we wanted to do was get to the truth. And before we got that far, he chose to resign. And then we all saw the report after the investigation.
Okay. Well, I didn't want to deviate too far into, you know, discourse on that, but I, I'm aware that he resigned after he was suspended, so.
And then the final question, and I apologize for the time. But I have here your application or your response to the RFQ. And in one paragraph, you state that you talked about not ever having experienced a disciplinary proceeding, no elected officials personal liable for acts relating to their functions. And then you state, "I have not in the past, do not at the present, nor anticipate in the future, any conflict of interest in representing the city." Now, I'm not an attorney. I'm not practiced at interpreting the law and I may be wrong on this. But I do have an email that was sent to the city back on October, it was Thursday, October 5th, 2017, at 12:06 PM from gene@ferishlaw.com, sent to Robert Vance, and the subject was election signs. And I, it reads, "I have just been advised that the city of Montavista is attempting to enforce the placement of election signs on medians in front of residences in the city while other signs, such as real estate signs, have been allowed for years. This is an enforcement decision based on sign content which specifically prohibited, which was specifically prohibited in the recent Supreme Court case of Reed v. Gilbert, and is not mitigated by any sudden decision to cause all signs to be removed from the medians since it's obvious that enforcement is based on the plight of those supporting the incumbent and the city administration, and it is obvious that the challenging candidates have many more signs than the incumbent. Furthermore, in the last election, Councilor Schrader's signs were placed all over the city rite-of-ways without any objection of the city manager. Accordingly, this appears to be a disparate treatment of candidates with whom the board and the city manager do not like in violation of their constitutional First Amendment rights of freedom of expression exposing city officials to personal liability as well as the city." So there's a, there's a big issue with that last statement there. Because as I recall, the city had wanted to enforce the placement of Carol Schrader's signs. And at your advice, did not enforce that due to the fact that Reed v. Gilbert rendered our sign code unconstitutional. There was also no effort made to make sure that our sign code did become constitutional. We were dealing with some issues and it got lost in the mix. However, throwing that then back in our face seemed a little bit disingenuous. So that was very concerning to me.
Well, first of all, you have to realize, Mr. Schleber, that Reed versus Gilbert, that opinion came out in 2015.
Right. I was on PMZ when they were delivered.
Yeah. And I was at CML when they were delivered. Anytime an opinion comes out like that, people are scratching their head to figure out, what does this mean? You've got a case that says you can't discriminate on the basis of content, basically on signs. And the case law developed and has been developing ever since.
Sure.
I think it was very clear by the time of the elections in 2017, last year, that political science in the city of Montavista, you cannot have situations like real estate signs. And we've got them all over the place, in the median, on the city rite-of-way. If you are going to allow those types of signs, you cannot go and prohibit candidate signs because that's a distinction based on content. And that's what I wrote the city manager and the public works director about. And that was a violation of the candidates' rights that were right. And if we'd had to go to court on that, I think the city would have lost on that issue. So, so I think it was, it was obvious by that time with developing case law, it came not only at Reed versus Gilbert, but the federal cases that came down the road after that, that that was going to be... after that, that that was going to be a prohibited distinction. And I don't know whether to this day you have gotten that, you have changed that ordinance or not. I, I don't think you have. If you have, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, we're working on it. We haven't changed it yet, but we're working on it.
Well, that's, that's, that's a faulty ordinance, and when you look at your entire sign code, you really have to be sensitive to that because my opinion of that is that you, if you're going to allow the real estate signs up there, you had probably better allow the political signs at the same time. They're more innocuous, they're smaller than the real estate signs even, so.
Look, I don't, I don't disagree with you on that, but the fact is, is that ruling came down in 2015, you were city attorney until the end of 2016.
Well, you're saying on the basis of just the naked decision itself, you know, I remember sitting there at CML and everybody's trying to figure out what, what are the ramifications of this? And so I sat through, by the time 2016 came along, I was sitting there going through seminars on this type of thing. And it started becoming clear, finally, we were getting some model codes in. Most of these have come in during the past year about how to regulate those signs. And your sign code needs some serious revision now.
I agree. And I remember even having that discussion back when I was still on TMZ back in 2014. So anyway, the, the one thing, and here's the question for you, because like I said, I'm not an attorney, but it is really concerning to me, you're, the way that you signed up, the Monti Movement Political Committee is requesting an immediate response from the city, yours very truly Eugene L. Ferish, Attorney at Law. Does that, or does that not constitute representation? Were you their attorney when they were campaigning?
I was the attorney for the Monti, well, I don't know whether you would say I was their attorney. I was helping the Monti Movement, and the Monti Movement was a committee. So was I helping these particular individuals as individuals? No, I was helping a committee that was supporting these people because they were, because they were advocating a platform, which gets back to what I was talking about when I first started this dialogue, a platform of, you know, filling up our city stores, of reforming the, or building back our police department, eradicating the drug culture, and renovating our buildings. That was the committee's platform. That's what I was supporting.
Okay, and that's fair enough, but what you're saying then is that the Monti Movement was a, was an issues committee, which in that case then they should have filed separately from the issues committee?
No, I don't think, I don't think so.
Campaign finance law is pretty clear on that.
Well, I don't, I don't know that it is, frankly, and we had a lot of dialogue with the municipal clerk on that, and I had dialogue with, I think, the CML on that, and they said it was appropriate to file as a local committee.
Hmm, that's interesting. I just talked with Sam, and he didn't mention that.
Well, I would be interested, if you want to go through that again, I would be more than happy to have that. That was, that was a very confusing thing I remember at the time because I was asking the question myself, how do we file? Do we file as a political committee? And when you look at the campaign manual that's out, which is split up into all these different sections...
It is.
You go through a lot of machinations to figure out how do you file? In which area do you file? And I, we took our best shot at that, and that's what we did.
Look, I'm not an attorney, but so far I have managed to file legally all of mine, so, I mean, that's, that's something that I would definitely, I've been through multiple campaign finance trainings, and I definitely think we need to look into that. But anyway, that's beside the point, and thank you for your time. I apologize that it went as long as it did.
It's okay. Hope I answered your questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell me, want to go get care?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Would you like to take like five to seven minutes, sir? Do you take a, take a brief recess?
Stand there.
Good job.
Stand there.
Well, you hit the block.
Hi, how's everyone?
Good.
You too.
So should we go backwards?
Okay, I'll begin.
Okay, Karen Whitey, you want to be the city attorney for Montavista?
I live here, it's my community. I am enjoying the work that I've been doing over the last year. I find it challenging in a way that's different from what I did before. I'm a, my background is trial attorney, civil litigator, and I am finding that being able to build relationships with people, be a part of creating something as opposed to when you, when you're litigated, you get it when it's already really pretty much gone the wrong way. So that aspect, I'm, I'm very much enjoying.
So please describe in some detail how many years and the depth of experience you have in municipal law and related matters, and what percentage of your practice is devoted to municipal law? And after you answer that, I'll do another secondary question.
Okay, I'm going to start backwards. Hundred percent of my practice at this juncture is devoted to municipal law. I've been in Colorado for three and a half years. Prior to that, I was in California, and I still have my license there, and I was doing, you know, civil litigation trial work. So I have been involved in municipal law specifically since I came to Colorado in June of 2014. I began to work with Mr. Ferish in August of 2014, and then I worked with Matthew Hobbs from August of 2015 until October of 2016, two years. And in addition to the, I was retained by Montavista in January of last year, so 2017, so I've been your city attorney since that time. Prior to that, I had been representing Hooper since about June of, exclusively since June of 2015. Also Romeo, I represented Sawatch for 10 months, and as of August of 2017, I represent Creed. So my municipal experience specifically is relatively recent, three and a half years. But what I'm finding from municipal law is that it's a constellation of various areas of the law, including litigation and including, you know, knowing the different bodies of law that affect my clients, and there's a lot of them. So, did I answer your question?
And then the follow-on question is, have you ever been the subject of professional discipline?
No, nor a complaint in either state.
What is your greatest attribute that you feel makes you the ideal candidate for the city attorney? That'll be two parts, this one as well.
Is that the first part?
Yeah, you want to say part two? What is one weakness that you have and how would you overcome it if selected as city attorney?
I think that the, the attribute, the attribute that I bring is my extensive background in litigation. I have, what I've found is I have a sense or an instinct for when there is a potential for a problem. And what I did in my previous practice is I would, I would get a case and immediately I would look at it and envision trying it and then work it back to see what, how I needed to set it up. So by the time I actually was trying it in front of the jury, I had put all of the pieces What I've found in doing this municipal work is I can spot a problem and think, okay, where could that go? And what can I do to ensure that it doesn't go that way? And I see that as the job of a city attorney. I'm, I'm to protect my client, to prevent legal exposure, which of course is, is always about money and finances. So I think that that's a, a bit of a different skill set I bring to this as opposed to if I had started out my career just doing municipal law, which is transactional, meaning it's, generally speaking, you're not in court. In terms of my weakness, I think that, I think sometimes I'm impatient, and I want to, I see where I think something could go that would be of great benefit, and I have to learn that in this process, I'm part of a collaborative process. I'm not the one who's driving the case. I'm here to provide the guidance to ensure that my clients, the boards, and the elected officials, it's, it's their vision. My personal view of it is irrelevant. I'm simply here to guide you and my other municipalities in such a way that you're as protected legally as much as I possibly can, or at least you know the potential ramifications of the decisions that you're contemplating. That's my job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening.
Good evening. I was watching the teletubbies the other day, thinking of you. I don't know where that came from.
No comment.
Okay, we'll leave it at that.
What is your philosophy for providing quality legal services?
That's a pretty broad question. However, I, my overhead is minimal because I'm not maintaining a brick and mortar office. I haven't for two years. And I, in the 10 years before that, when I was practicing in California, I didn't have one either. I worked out of my home. I am vassal with all aspects of technology. I type my own everything. I have a cell phone, I answer my own phone, I use text, I use email. And that allows me, you know, in this valley, we're, it was different from when I was, was back in California, the economics is huge. And I, I don't think any of us are here to make a lot of money. I think we all want to do well, but my, I try very hard to be judicious and reasonable in, in billing my clients and just mindful, especially some of my smaller municipalities that really just have no money and they, you know, they need some help. So I use all of those things at my disposal to minimize the amount of time that I spend on something so as to ensure that it's economical for my clients.
Thank you.
And I have a series of questions.
Okay.
Do you see yourself as a litigator or a transactional attorney?
I'm both now. I mean, I'll always be a litigator because it's, it's instinctive to me now, but most of the work that I'm doing for my clients now, it's, it's not in court, so it would therefore be transactional.
Would you be comfortable with prosecuting cases in municipal court?
Absolutely. As well as district court, maybe.
Are you comfortable in writing city codes, ordinances, contracts, et cetera?
Yes. That's, it's, again, the litigation background I found helps me with that because as I'm drafting something, having spent so many years taking the law and looking at every single word and comma and how it's placed and how that plays out in something that's litigated, because I mean, usually I would get a contract where there was a dispute about how the language was written. Now that I'm actually drafting them, I really look with a very keen eye of if I use that word, if I put that punctuation there, if I describe it this way, how could it, how could it play itself out? And I think that that is a, is a benefit that I bring to my clients because of that other experience.
And one more, are you comfortable in providing legal advice to council?
Am I comfortable?
Comfortable in providing legal advice to council?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and I think now it's my turn. Does anybody have anything additional to? Okay. Can you tell us about your billing practices and rates, and also if you would be available on an as-needed basis for telephone conferences with city personnel and elected officials? And if so, how do your billing practices for phone conference, what are they, for phone conferences and questions? Do you have a minimum unit of time that you bill? That's a lot of questions.
It is. Let me just see, first off, for, for the city, I'm on a retainer. So we, we, when I was retained, when we worked out the contract, the city wanted to pay me $40,000 a year, I agreed to it. And so each month I get a check, and that is unlimited. Anybody can call me. I speak to not only, I mean, Forrest is the person that I speak to most often, but any department head can call me. And, you know, theoretically, an employee could call me, although that's, that's beyond the chain of command. And everyone, I mean, I hope you guys all have my cell phone numbers because I've given it to you, you can call me at any time as well. And so I don't specifically bill that out. It's just whatever the city needs, I've agreed to, that's the cap on it. It doesn't, there's no expenses unless, of course, I had to go to district court, which I haven't had to do, for example, filing fees or expert fees, but none of that. I don't charge for mileage, I don't charge for any of my continuing legal education, conferences, seminars, that's all I need. This is all the city pays me, and that's, it's a contract I'd be willing to continue.
Okay, thank you.
Once again, I think we can skip this question since it was pretty well answered. Is everybody good with that?
I agree.
It's the, are you willing to operate on a retainer? So, yeah. So if you require additional or ongoing training to perform the duties of city attorney, do you feel this cost would be the responsibility of the city?
Absolutely not.
If you require additional education, how certain are you that you can educate yourself to handle all the components listed in a timely manner?
Hundred percent certain.
We've got a little time to get to.
How do you feel about working with other...
How do you feel about working with other attorneys that are under contract with the city? We are currently working with water attorney on our augmentation plan and we often work with SIRSIA attorneys on issues related to personnel and workers' comp.
I've been working with, um, Kate and Peter, the water attorneys, since I came on board January of 2017. I always enjoy listening to them because they know so much about an area that is so critical, but which I'm not an expert in. So I always feel like every time they update me, I, I learn something. As, as for SIRSIA counsel, again, in the last, uh, I started working, uh, with SIRSIA counsel even before my contract officially started because there were a lot of, um, issues that came up at the end of 2016. And I started working with not only their in-house attorneys, but the, what we call them their, it's going to sound terrible, out-house attorneys, which I don't really mean out-house attorneys. I mean, just not in-house attorneys. So all of those people, um, I'm very, uh, I've become quite familiar, a lot of, lot of confidence, trust that's developing in, in those relationships.
If you were selected by the city of Montevista and recommended, please state whom you consider your client to be and also your role as the attorney. How do you feel about taking your direction on, how do you feel about taking your direction on tasks from the city council?
My client is the city. The council body is the representative of my client. That's, that's how it works. So my role is to do what's in the best interest of my client, i.e. the city. So that's not individual. It's looking at, uh, the, the institution, the entity as a whole. What, and, and then you said taking direction? I'm sorry.
How do you, uh, that's okay. I, how do you feel about taking your direction on tasks from the city council? I think you can already answer.
It's perfectly appropriate or as council directs wars to direct me or that's, that's as it should be. And I feel just fine about that as long as it's clear direction and it's, it's good.
Good. Thank you.
Did I, did I get all that?
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
I'm a little tired. A little late.
I know.
I'm sure you guys are too, so I'll stop talking so much.
The city plans to enter into an annual contract for provision of the services required for the city attorney with the appropriate, with the opportunity for five years of renewal. And such a con, is such a contract acceptable to you with the knowledge that the council may choose to conduct an annual review of your performance?
Yes, I would welcome that. I, I had, didn't, from the last council, I didn't get a review, so I, it's kind of hard for you guys coming in to, because you're new and we don't know each other in the same way and you don't have anything to go on. So I think that an annual review or six-month review is really appropriate to get to know one each, know each other, learn how our styles work and, um, you know, create a good, good plan for the future.
Um, do you feel it's necessary to attend council meetings or would you prefer, prefer to prepare reports for the council's review on pending legal issues?
I like doing both. I, I think it's good to be here. It gives me, um, we, we had this issue come up before, so we were talking about it, uh, and I won't get into the details of it, but as I was sitting here at the last council meeting, there's something that I heard that no one else keyed into. It's because I, I hear, and this is unfortunate in my, in my personal life, that I hear things differently. I, it's just what you get trained to do. So I like being here, um, because then I'm right on top of what you all are dealing with or what, what the public's interested in. I do, um, I did do memos to previous council on confidential things and then would, would explain it and then have an executive session when I needed to talk to everyone. And that's so that, uh, the council would know in advance what issues, uh, that I was bringing to their attention. But I'm open to whatever, uh, is, is, is the way that, that this council, it works best for you. That's, you know, that, I, I would, I adjust myself to what is going to serve your needs. Was there anything else on that one?
Uh, thank you. You answered very well.
Thanks.
Do you feel it is necessary for the city attorney to attend planning and zoning commission meetings, supportive adjustments meetings, and urban renewal authority meetings on a regular basis? Explain your thoughts on this.
I think that, I think it's really in the discretion of the, the city manager who is, knows what issues are happening with each of those boards. What, I've taken my cues from Rob, uh, when Forrest was out, in Forrest, you know, we'll check in, you know, we, we, we talk on a regular basis. I'll just say, hey, so the, the URA meeting's coming up. Do you see a reason for me to attend? Would it be helpful? He'll be like, yeah, it would be good this time, or no, don't worry about it. So I take my direction, um, is whatever is most helpful. Did I get that one too?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Additional water rights and augmentation for the city is high priority. What do you know about the water issues facing Montevista and Valley?
I know some of it, but I am not an expert, which is why, um, the, before I even came on board, I mean, the city of Montevista hired Peter and Kate because they're the experts in that. And I would do, I, I would take their direction of anything that I would need to do, but I'm not going to wade into their area of expertise. And that is also the same with, uh, Creed and not just the water issues, it's also apparently wastewater too. So, uh, as I see it, my job is to ensure that the, my clients have retained the experts in those areas, engineers and attorneys, because I am not an expert in that area, in, in either of those areas.
Thank you.
What is your current workload and how do you set the priorities amongst your various clients?
I'm not really sure what you mean by workload.
Workload meaning you're representing more than one community?
Right.
I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
And whatever private, comparing that to whatever private practice, um, and how does, how does that relate to your representation and responsibilities as the attorney?
Well, the, the way that, uh, when I enter, you know, Montevista has their setup, Hooper, they don't conflict with meetings. Um, Creed, when they retained me, moved their meetings so it wouldn't conflict with Montevista. Um, essentially what happens is that really, really, Montevista's my biggest client, so it, it takes priority. So for example, on, on, on Tuesday, there were, it was Hooper's meeting and it was Creed's work session. I put Hooper and Creed on me, you know, cellphone, text me, and I, I came to the strategic planning. And I talk with that, with my clients and say, you know, what are you dealing with in this particular thing? Could, can I appear by phone? And I just kind of gauge what is, what, where do I need to be, um, that, that is, is a priority. And fortunately, um, I haven't had too, too many conflicts like that. I'm usually able to work them out.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, do you have any questions for the council?
No.
So once again, I've got, um, we answered the one question, so I'm not going to ask that one, but I've got three other questions, um, additional. And so, uh, how have you in the past and how would you in the future handle high-level employee resignations and terminations? And I recognize that those are two pretty opposite things.
No, they can and they cannot be. I mean, sometimes a resignation ends up being, uh, what we call a constructive termination. So an employee that may decide to resign, then later you find yourself with a lawsuit or a letter from an attorney. So in terms of, of handling, um, resignations, I mean, I think that there's, what I feel that we've developed and what I hope will continue is communication. If I get, you know, because, let, let's be honest, I, I'm going to know certainly in advance, or we're going to know certainly in advance, if we're going to do a termination. And generally speaking, there is a, a, a way that those are handled. They're involved with SIRSIA and, uh, they're outside council and they're done methodically so as to ensure that the city is protected. So I, I, I work with those entities in, in that way. With a resignation, it could have some of the same components. And so I would hope, you know, somebody resigns, not because they're taking another job, but because they're not happy. Um, I think it would have indicators before that. And again, to be able to try to assist, um, most likely Forrest dealing with that in, in, in a way that protects the city. Obviously, um, you know, if, and I'm, I'm just trying to extrapolate on your question to think of what other kind of scenarios, uh, without getting into confidential matters. But let's just say that it, that, uh, I can hold, uh, evidence, you know, separate and apart. Normally, um, the city would hold files, but if there's a situation that develops where there's a conflict or a potential conflict, that's something that I can do under the rules of professional responsibility. Am I answering the question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Is there any follow-up on that one?
Not really.
Okay.
What types of ordinances have you drafted in the past and how have they been implemented? Now, obviously, that's a pretty broad question and can encompass a lot of ordinances. Choose a few that you'd like to highlight.
Uh, I think the, you know, the, last year, one of, one of the things that came up was a penalty ordinance, removing incarceration from these codes. You know, this wasn't just, uh, Montevista that we presented the ordinance and council opted not to enact that. But I did it for Creed, I did it for Sawatch. Hooper doesn't, Hooper and Romeo don't have anything. So that was interesting because that's, uh, that can be, uh, politically not, I mean, not, not in a place like Sawatch because there's really, they're, they're putting everything in county court. So it wasn't, uh, a big deal. Here it was, uh, there were some ramifications to consider, so did that. Um, did, I've done two tiny homes ordinances, one for Creed, one here for Montevista. Of course, that was, was the assistance of the, uh, former intern CJ, um, came in on that. I don't know why that is popular, but it is apparently popular here. Um, obviously the marijuana stuff, did that both for Sawatch and here. Um, did a drug house, one for Montevista to allow us to, uh, well, we had, we had an ordinance that was drafted and I redid it, I mean, revised it because I wanted to take out some stuff that I thought might get us in trouble and expand it so that, give another tool to the police department and the city, which would be to hold not only the occupants of the dwelling responsible, but the owners, even if they were absent, for activity that was going on in their houses. So we've, we've got that on the books as well, just waiting to make use of it. So those are just, that's just a, just a sample. I'm not going to, I mean, there, there's a lot of other ones, but I'm assuming I'm interested in that.
Thank you.
Sure.
How would you respond to constitutional violations within the courtroom? More specifically, how would you work with council to resolve the issue?
And const, and, and when you're saying constitutional violations, you're, are you talking about our municipal court?
Yes.
As opposed to, um, if I might be in any other court? That's what you're referring to?
Yeah. I mean, I believe that we as council have a responsibility to municipal court, but we wouldn't have any of the other higher courts.
Okay. Well, it would be the same way that I would deal with, uh, issues.
Yep.
And, and have dealt with this. Uh, as you all may know, what we had to, uh, move away from our, our previous municipal judge because those were the issues that, that came up. And, um, there were steps certainly that I, I took and conversations that I had with council, uh, before that happened in, in confidence. And then when it did happen, we, uh, proceeded because I was, I was concerned about that back when I first started. But what I, what I would try to do is if I saw that, that there was something that was going on in the courtroom, as, as, as municipal prosecutor, I have a responsibility to ensure the integrity of the courtroom. It isn't, you know, I don't, I don't get out of that just because I'm not the judge. Um, also, as an attorney, uh, the state of Colorado, and I want to keep both of my licensures current, so if I do anything, it's going to, one is going to affect the other. We, we do have an obligation, um, to address, uh, activities that either by other attorneys or judges that are, are not on the straight and narrow. So to go specifically to your question, probably what I would do is if I saw something I didn't like, I'd probably, uh, make an effort to stop the proceedings and then try and have a conversation, uh, with the court to say, hey, I've got a concern here. This is where I think there's a problem. See if we can't work it out. Maybe I'm right about it, maybe I'm not. If I do believe that I'm not getting the response so that it, the issue is handled in court, then what I would do is I would, uh, ask for an executive session with council, uh, and do research outside to, you know, present a memo of where I felt the problem was, what kind of research I had done, uh, to find solutions to the problem and then bring it and make recommendations. That's probably.
Thank you. That's all I've got. Appreciate council indulging me in additional questions.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.? All right. Thank you very much. Are, are we done with the meeting or?
I've got a few items left.
Anybody go sit down? Yeah. Thank you.
So, whatever you want to do. We'll put that on very thoroughly. So we're going to do a council, council committee, city commission, and council reports. So Gary, you have something you'd like to discuss?
Oh, yes, absolutely. This so happens. Um, I wanted to make the initial, uh, opening discussion of the current base water rates and limitations for the city of Montevista. And I make this brief. Just to, uh, cover the high points, the recent history of city of Montevista base water rates begins in early 2016, obviously goes way beyond that, but, uh, just recently, uh, early 2016, the base, uh, parentheses, non-build usage rate stood at 10,000 gallons with concern of the water rules going into effect throughout the San Luis Valley. Uh, that base usage was reduced to 5,000 gallons. The water rules ultimately resulted generally in our favor, which leads to this current discussion. In addition, according to water attorney Kate Ryan, purchases prior to new water rules plus past negotiations involving irrigation rights, lease options for storage space in the Rio Grande reservoir, and options to purchase water for the water, uh, the Anderson Ditch. purchases prior to new water rules plus past negotiations involving irrigation rights, lease options for storage space in the Rio Grande reservoir, and options to purchase water for the water... The Anderson Ditch Company have left our city in a very favorable position in terms of water availability. In spite of the current, hopefully now waning, snow drought. That's a statement of faith. So my proposal is to revert, at least in part, to the previous base usage by setting that minimum at not all the way to 10,000, but at 7,500 gallons. The idea being not necessarily to encourage more usage, but to provide a return to the hard-working citizens of Montavista, a dividend based on the effective and efficient operation of the corporation of which they are shareholders. It has been suggested that this dividend be limited to those in need. The idea being that those able to prove their financial hardship could receive the appropriate benefit. My answer to that is that these are not beggars seeking a handout, but owners slash shareholders of the corporation receiving a long overdue and much less than it should be return on their investment. And how have they invested? By living here, by paying taxes here, by supporting churches and charities here, by participating in the recreation, entertainment, and causes here, and by representing this inspiring and gorgeous slice of America, Americana if you will, with pride. And is this dividend being paid out of the bags of money that we keep in that room just behind you? The answer to that is no. There isn't any money back there. And is there a dollar-for-dollar trade-off built in here to pay for this adjustment? The answer again is no. As the board of directors of this corporation that we call Montavista, it is our duty to maintain, support, and appreciate those for whom we work, the citizens of this great town. So in the spirit of free enterprise, you could call this a faith dividend. Good things are coming to this town, but for that to happen, we need the support of all our good citizens. So with that in mind, I commit this dividend to the city staff to bring a report to the impact on our town. Keeping in mind that if there is only cost or outgoing this transaction, then it in... Then in my way of seeing this corporation, it is well worth it and couldn't be better invested anywhere but in our shareholders. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just for clarifications. Well said, by the way. I thought it was well written. You wanna reduce the base rate from the flat 10,000 gallons down to 7,500 gallons, right?
No, it's actually 5,000 right now.
Oh, and you wanna increase it?
I just wanna increase the base usage, which gets a little contradictory. It took me some while, some time, to sort that out and get it... To accomplish what we're really after. The base rate, base amount of free, if you wanna call it, right, usage has been reduced from 10,000 to 5,000.
Okay.
My proposal simply is not necessarily to go back all the way to the 10,000, but at least provide a dividend. And I use that word because it's not relief. It's not a way to cure the poverty in our town. It's a way to provide a relatively small dividend to the shareholders, which I keep referring to as the public who really own this town and that's who we work for. So it provides a small amount of benefit, but it is a benefit and it is directed towards the goodwill of the people that we work for.
Thank you. Just an observation on that is some of the issue that we face, because that's one of the things that I ran into when I was campaigning, was that we have some very high water rates. Across the state, we have high water rates. And the issue that we run into is the taxpayer bill of rights, the Tabor laws. And what that amounts to is it has become very difficult to figure out how to keep a city sustainable through taxes because of the restrictions that have been placed. And you see that in small municipalities across the state. And it's just a challenge that we face. We work with it, we deal with it, we do what we can. However, in response to that, we have seen utility fees go up, such as water rates, sewer rates, and that type of stuff. And so how we address that, I mean, I absolutely agree with you, what you're saying, and how we address that is going to be critical for our sustainability moving forward.
I agree, and I've researched some of that. I'm certainly not an expert on the Tabor rules, but... Based on our situation in this town, I won't go into all the details about that, but the way that we have dealt with those Tabor issues has... Is a great benefit to the community. Most of this obviously goes way back before my time. So I'm giving credit to the way that the structure was put together, the way that the water was... The water rules and options have been handled in the past. Past administrations are to be given credit for that. So, and it goes back quite a ways. And the main thing that I'm emphasizing is the analysis from our water attorney Kate Ryan that made it clear that there is absolutely no concern at this point. Things change, but at this point in time, absolutely no concern with the amount of water available to the city. We have another issue outside the town where... And that's what this, the water cases and trial has been all about. But we are in a very good position at this point to allow a very small dividend. Presumably, and this is my take on the Tabor situation, but not affected by the Tabor rules. Could be wrong about that, but that's...
You're right.
That may well... My understanding of it is that it's not affecting this particular kind of a situation. So, in any case, that's where we're at. We don't want to... We're not gonna go any further with that other than my request to staff to produce a report as to the effect of all of this on the city and present that at the next meeting.
Does it need to be informed of the motion, Forrest?
Well, not necessarily, Mr. Mayor. That could be a nod of approval for the staff to present the report. My request would be that it be at March 15th meeting, since the next meeting is next week.
What a surprise.
A little bit of a short timeframe. A number of pending things that we're kinda busy with.
I would agree with that.
If you do that, so the 15th, if council agrees, we'll bring you a report.
I would certainly agree with that.
Work session, March 6th, we need to vote on that. Any of you just... That's to let everybody know.
Just a nod that you guys are all okay, and I'll get that posted. And the one thing that we also needed to add to that is your special meeting for March 12th to do a second reading on the ordinance of 884, which you did the first reading tonight.
Do we need a motion to go to?
Just a second. Same time?
Same time, same place, same baton.
Okay, so March 6th, 2018, 6:00 PM, we have a work session. March 12th at 6:00 PM is the second reading of the... Or is it 884? Thank you.
So, really quickly before we go into executive session, I know I've taken a lot of time tonight and I appreciate everybody's indulgence. This is something that is very important to me. And I would ask that council indulge us mean one more time. I've just got a brief statement. I'm gonna read the statement. I don't trust myself not to lose control. What I'm about to say, I take more seriously than my own life. I think we've... From my experience, what I've experienced working almost two years with Mr. Farish has been a violation of laws, misstep after misstep. I mean, it's... He's made a living... Was evidenced in the February 1st meeting. He's made a living off of manipulating, controlling council. He's lost very important city documents and he's refused to give the city their property when the city chose to not renew his contract. So I have a question. Mr. Farish, do you remember the day you swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic? As I remember the day that I swore that oath. I can still hear the clock ticking on the wall, smell the musty air and see the pattern on the carpet and hear voices as we made that solemn vow and we ended with the words, "So help me God." Many of my brothers and sisters bled and died for that promise. Many of them bled on the uniform you still wear. If you ever get a chance, go read Sergeant Dakota Meyer's Medal of Honor citation. There are three Marines and a Navy corpsman who died in that battle. All four of them were from my unit. There is also a soldier who died from wounds received in that battle. I did not have the good fortune of knowing him, and he was still my brother. Mr. Farish, with the way that you have practiced law and at the times that you've approached upon the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and the state of Colorado, you've desecrated their graves and trampled upon their memories. You've brought shame and dishonor to the uniform they and many of my brothers and sisters bled upon. You can sit in your large house with the money that we have paid you, built upon the backs of the citizens of Montavista, and look, watch us as we fight to try and get our community back. You've done enough. Tonight, I make this promise to my community. As long as my watch continues, I will fight for the rights of my fellow citizens against such people who would try to take those rights away. So help me God.
Yes, sir, you may.
Mr. Shaliba, I was hoping that we could get through this without some kind of outrageous statement by you, such as you've made. That is the most outrageous thing that I have ever heard in my life. I have worn the uniform of our country and I'm proud of that. And don't you ever accuse me of desecrating that uniform again. Don't you ever do that. I have also been respectful of the rights of defendants. I am a prosecutor. We have a system by which we have prosecutors and defense counsel. And defense counsel are responsible for representing their particular client. I have dual responsibility of protecting rights, but prosecuting also. And I've carried that out eminently. I have also represented this city faithfully for 36 years. And I have done so well, I believe. I've done so with honor. And I have been complimented on my service to this city many, many times. I am really outraged at your comments, and I think they're ridiculous. And I reject them. And I hope that this council, without having to go into any more detail, rejects that type of approach. I think you are upset because I promoted the agenda of reform in this city. I saw what you have done yourself in getting rid of people constantly in the city. You have been a part of that. I reject that. And yet, I realize if I'm selected here, I may have to work with you. And if I have to do that, I will do that. I will do that to the best of my ability. I'm just sickened by the fact that you would make that type of accusation and that kind of comment to a public body and in public. It's a lie, and so are you. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, it is February 22nd, 2018.
Do you believe we need to have a vote to go into executive session?
You better get that voted in, because I'm gonna push it in.
I move to go into executive session.
I second.
It moved in second, is there any discussion? Nita.
Counselor Segala.
Aye.
Counselor Ella Fort.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Shaliba.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.